Time being seven o'clock, I'll call on Monday, February 28th, 2022 meeting of the Oxford Planning Board to order. I have something new I'm going to read tonight. No one's recording, right? Anyway, in addition to tonight's video recording on Oxford Cable Access pursuant to the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Those making the recording must inform the Chair. I found out through the open meeting law, I have a lot of power as being the Chair. I found that out after 30 years. If possible, and have those individuals state their name and address, so no one's recording here tonight, so. All attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present or are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Lots of fancy words. Okay. Seven o'clock plans not requiring subdivision approval, we have none. Okay. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes of February 14th, 2022.
I'll make that a motion.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mark. Further discussion? Being none, roll call vote?
I'll abstain.
Aye.
Yes, okay.
Yes.
Mark?
Mark.
Yes. And I vote yes. So four yes and one abstention. We did find out that old business slash new business on the agenda is not good enough to talk about public property. I don't know if any of the other people went to the discussion on the open meeting law. Okay? If we were to discuss, I brought as a reference the problem with 608 Main Street, which is a filled-in, you know, part of a plan that we approved. If we were going to discuss that, we literally should put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay.
So that those at 608 know it's on our agenda or whatever. So we can bring up things on old or new business, we can bring up things to consider to put on the agenda of the next meeting. Okay, we have a submission. 34 Mount Pleasant Street, application for special permit. Applicant John T. Belanger, owner John T. and Megan R. Belanger, for an in-law apartment within an existing single-family home. Is the applicant here? No? Okay. Okay, best I can tell, it was given to us on February 14th, 2022. They're looking for a accessory apartment to their home. It's a complete submission. Best I can tell, they're converting their basement into an in-law apartment. Entertain a motion to accept this application for a special permit.
So moved.
I'll second.
So let's, we gotta make, we gotta make a public hearing for it, so.
March 28th.
March 28th at?
At 7:05.
At 7:05. Is that okay, Mark?
It is.
7:05 on the 28th, okay? Is there a second?
Christine, second it.
I'll second it.
You second that, okay? Further discussion? There being none, roll call vote. Jeff?
I vote aye.
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 And I vote aye. Five ayes and a affirmative, carried unanimously. Okay, time.
I already have something scheduled for 7:05 on the 28th.
Oh, yeah.
I think it's 7:03.
We could fit it in, just like we did today, unless we have an A and R that carries it over. We can get it in there. I don't think there's gonna be a lot of discussion, I don't know, unless anyone thinks there will be.
They're not changing the structure of the house, everything's inside.
It's actually, to me, you know, it's looking like minor.
Yeah.
Because there's no, whatever, give others an opportunity. 7:03 it is, okay? Is that okay with you, Mark and Christine?
Yep.
Okay, time being 7:05, we have a continued public hearing, History Estates. Property off History Drive. Okay, and what brings to mind for me is the action date that we have to reply by is April 6th, 2022. We're gonna have to discuss that. Anyway, we received the plans today. We received the plans today, we also received the response to Graves' first iteration from the old plans, but it has not gotten to Graves again to review the existing plans. They also have a request for some waivers. I asked Tony if he would address the waivers scenario, so we can at least decide if those would be okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members. So we received the request for waivers also today with the revised plans. The applicant seeking for waivers from the town subdivision rules and regulations. The first waiver is for the length of the proposed roadway, including the existing portion of History Drive is approximately 840 feet. For dead-end streets, the subdivision requirement is 500 feet, and that's noted on page 16, number 6A. Just for reference, if the roadway was 1,000 feet, or if they're more than 20-plus units, then it would be required two means of egress, if you will. Just to clarify, I believe a comment was made from one of the members at the last meeting, so this does not meet that threshold, but certainly exceeds the requirement of 500 feet, so this is in the form of a waiver request. The second one, the proposed subdivision has 15 lots, and the way it reads here, the applicant's requesting or notes that the subdivision requirements allow only four lots, just a notation here. So, in page 16 of our subdivision rules and regs, 6C, says in no case shall the cul-de-sac provide frontage or access for more than four lots. The total subdivision, as we know, is 15 lots. On the cul-de-sac, there is lots five, six, seven, eight, nine, and 10. The total of six lots. So they're requesting a waiver to have more than four lots, showing on their plans, a total of six lots, making frontage on the cul-de-sac. Number three, the drainage system is shown using plastic HDPE pipe, and subdivision requirements are to use reinforced concrete pipe. HDPE, as I'm told, is standard, and so the applicant is requesting a waiver.
Tony, can we get that run through DPW, please?
Yes. And also, number four, is the vertical datum used on the definitive subdivision plan is NAVD-88, and subdivision requirements are to use NGVD-1929 vertical datum. So that comes out of page 10, number three. As part of the topographic plans, applicants are required to use the 1929 reference here. Industry standard now is the NAVD or NAVD-88. So the applicant is requesting a waiver from strict compliance with, again, subdivision rules and regs.
There's something we can address on the rewrite of the subdivision rules and regulations.
Yes, yes, duly noted.
I take it NAVD-88 is newer, more updated than the other one? Yeah, okay.
So the applicant seeking a request for these four waivers, if the, the board does not have to take action tonight on these waivers, but certainly want to inform the board that this is their formal request of waivers.
No, I'd just like them to update that note too, because I was confused by it too, okay? It should have addressed cul-de-sac lots. Okay, that's all. So I would suggest that, and I want to get DPW's, DPW is gonna be in charge of this drainage system. I want to make sure it's okay with the DPW.
Sure, sure, and for everybody's benefit, we just received this today. This request of waivers and the revised plans were just posted online this afternoon, so for everyone to be aware of, and a copy will be downstairs in the clerk's office in the morning.
Yeah, so, see, to me, that's, that, as a planning board member, I'm frustrated. We gave you over a month, and not to get it in on time so we could have gotten some additional peer review, it wastes all these butters coming in. Okay, that's.
I can speak to that.
Okay. Come on up here, so everyone can hear you.
Just identify yourself for the record, please.
Jason DuBois, D.C. Engineering Survey. We had scheduled test pits out in the field, and with the snow and everything, and the frozen ground, it was, you know, it took us a little bit of time to get out there. It was only like a week and a half ago that we did those. After that, we did, you know, make, make all the revisions. I spoke with Jeff Walsh as late as Monday last week about a couple of final questions with the drainage, and I told him I was gonna be getting the plans into him like the next day, and he's like, oh, I'm leaving tomorrow for a week. That was last Monday.
Well, those are the things you run into, that's why.
I know.
We tried to give you more time than, like, the next, our next meeting, two weeks away, we tried to give you a bigger envelope to work within.
Well, that's, we were hoping to get, have him have a week, you know, to look at the plans, but he happened to be leaving that, that exact day, and he's gone until tomorrow morning, so.
Okay.
That's why it's kind of last minute.
All right.
And I just, we wanted to just come in, just kind of address the board and kind of give them an update of where we were at. I did speak with Jared, I have emails regarding the pipe, and he's actually for the HDPE pipe. He said he would write a letter, but I guess he.
Well, that's fine, because we're looking to update our subdivision rules and regs, because they were, they were done a few, a few years ago. I know technology continues to change, and, like I said, as long as our Department of Public Works is okay with it, you know, I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, he did say that he would send a memo, but I guess he.
Okay. The only thing I want to do is I want, I want to prevent additional extensions. I know you got a, you got an action date of April 6th. You can say, well, we got, we got two more meetings to deal with, but.
I would like to think that Graves can turn it around in a week, and he can.
Yeah, he may turn it around, and he may have additional things he comes back at you with, I don't know. I just want, I want to get an extension on there, just to let you know that if this thing gets continued, I feel frustrated for, I have to come here, because I'm a board member, and we meet every two times a month, okay? These residents don't have to be trying to follow this, because it drags out, okay? I'm sorry there were so many things that you had to do, and, but it's not their fault. I just want to, I don't want anything to slip through the cracks. Sometimes we can have a quorum problem, too. So, but we're getting to the point in time where it's gonna be very busy for us, because we're having a town meeting in May, we're gonna have to deal with some public hearings on that. I would like, I would like to get an extension tonight for, you know, 30 days or 60 days, I don't care how you do it, okay? For us to act, it's for us to make a decision, okay?
Will there be a meeting in two more, in two weeks from now?
There'll be a meeting, you can, you can put right on here, you want to be on the next agenda, but I just want further time for us to act. Okay, okay. Here, Jay, can you take that and fill it out with your applicant? You can sit at the table if you want, Tony could move his computer terminal there.
From the public one?
Does the public want to say anything, since you took the time to come out here?
Since you're here?
Frankly, I just want to absorb what we got today, I want to figure out what's going on.
Okay, it's a brand-new set of plans.
We just got a new set of plans.
And a response to the, to the original Graves.
The original plans.
Plan, the original plan discussion, so.
Can you explain to me this, I couldn't hear him very well, because he talks soft. But what was this about, the four lots versus six?
The number of lots that can go beyond the cul-de-sac. Depend on interpretation, I don't know if a couple of those Tony even applied, because it's only the edge of.
I would think it has to do with the frontage, though, it's still part of the frontage of that lot.
It's basically the strict, how many lots you put on the cul-de-sac, so there's enough frontage to.
On the actual cul-de-sac itself?
Yeah. Frontage and the way they go out, if you, if you look at it dimensionally, houses gotta go in that cul-de-sac.
Two of them, two lots have pizza, but it's still part of the frontage of the overall lot.
But five lots are depending on the cul-de-sac for vital access. And it's got a 50-foot access to another lot that's down back there.
And right now, the bylaw is only for four.
Yeah, let me, let me check.
Mr. Chairman?
Are you gonna?
Sir?
Yes, sir.
I only have two questions. The plans haven't changed. I live on a dead-end street, and you're not planning on going through God's.
No. Correct? So that's still the same? Yes, the plans.
Secondly, when they chop down all those trees up there that don't suck up the water, and I understand they're gonna have a sewer system up there, but when my yard turns into a swamp, I have been living in my home for 18 years, I do not have a subpoor, dry as a bone. What happens if they chop down all those trees, and all of a sudden, my yard turns into a swamp, and I get water in my cellar? Is there any compensation for that? That's my only two questions, that's it.
The plans haven't changed, the houses are where they were, they, it's a dead end, they're asking to extend the dead-end street 300-plus feet beyond what it, we have on our.
That's the question, you said no, we're not gonna go through God's street and make another.
Well, again, the stormwater.
Yeah, no, they shut, there it is, they're not even near God's street.
Right, but they, they can't have any more water run off the property posted, not supposed to, posted pretty.
Well, no, I understand it, but it's a what-if.
Well, we can't, we can't, it's a hypothetical, we can't answer that question.
So the technical answer to your question is you have an action for trespass from the source of the flooding.
Action to trespass.
You'd have to, you'd have to go to court, in other words, you'd have to take, take the developer to court.
But, but if this subdivision goes in, and you notice differences, we've had this with other plans, where there's an immediate impact caused by the development, you come before this board and you report it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you can do that, we, we, we handle that.
Yeah, we just had one.
And at that point, what does the board have the legal authority to do, if I might ask?
Well, on the solar, remember the solar?
Yeah, well, they had pipes buried within their.
We still had jurisdiction over that, and, and we do have the right to have the building inspector inspect.
But we had, same thing, we had the homeowner that had a problem, we developed his backyard without a permit and stuff like that, and we had him adjust that.
Right.
And take care of, you know.
And DPW is enforcement for stormwater, the town can collect the authority and help money set aside for maybe here, so we need it here. So, sorry to interrupt, 30 days is May 6th, 60 days is June 6th. So I don't know if you want 30 days or 60 days.
Whatever you're comfortable with, I mean, we're expecting to have this wrapped up in the next.
I'm sure you are, I'm sure you are, but I, like I said, I'm a little frustrated, because it took this long to get to where we are, okay? And I understand weather, and I understand other things, too, but.
So we could be better safe than sorry, and go like 60 days.
Yeah, go with that. Be not quite 60, because we'd have to deal with it in May anyway, because our first meeting in June is much further than the 6th, so.
The 13th.
13th, so.
Yeah.
We won't have, that's okay, we're, we're getting three or four meetings that we don't have to worry about quarums, and I don't want any pressure on our part.
Do you want to read this?
Yeah, I'll read it into the record. Okay, well, before you go, like, we're gonna meet on.
60 days.
Okay, you guys want to meet on our next meeting, March 14th? Yeah, okay, I gotta put that in there, too. March 14th at? That one's okay?
I don't have anything written down.
Okay. March 14th, I have a request for an extension for time of action for the planning board, dated today, for definitive subdivision History Drive. Hereby request the planning board extend the time of action on said application to June 6th, 2022, and/or hereby request that the planning board continue the public hearing on said application till March 14th, 2022, at 7:05 PM.
I'll make that a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. Further discussion? There being none, roll call.
I vote aye.
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 And I vote aye, carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, so we got that straightened away, we got it, these plans are gonna go to our third-party reviewer, along with your notes, and we'll see what happens from there on our, on the 14th, okay? All right?
All right, thank you.
See you on the 14th, March.
So Mary, these old, these old plans can go, right?
Yes.
Yeah, the old plans can go.
There'll probably be another, there'll probably be one more step. There'll probably be one more step.
There may be another one.
It will, it has to be.
Yeah, there has to be, because, yeah, I know.
Enforcement.
Yeah, I know.
So I'd like to ask, now we have the 11 by 17 for you tonight.
Yeah, I like this one, yeah.
Or midway between the first and last sets. Are you gonna want a full-size set?
I personally like this size, myself.
For the next meeting?
I do, too. The reason I think that was so big was because of, prior to electronic, it was for your cabinets and readability, too.
Well, that's what I meant, was the readability.
Yeah, yeah, now, we don't get into it to that nitty-gritty.
I can't, yeah.
I think it's, it's nice to be able to flip through some small pages, instead of banging into the mic, trying to open the thing up and look at it.
When he says reference page six, you can just do, 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 and find page six.
And now that they supply everything in PDF format, you know, you've got something for the record all the time.
I can't read that.
So that's another thing you can add to the.
The waivers.
Let's, let's fix, well, not a waiver. No, they can, they can supply them big. At the end, they should supply them big to you. Okay?
Well, for the, yeah.
I'm talking about for your file, you know, this file here. But for us, no, I'm, I'm okay with small ones. You know, a big, maybe a big one for the third party, maybe they should be big for him, so he can, he can look at it.
We need to look at something during the meeting, we just pulled a PDF.
Yeah, yeah.
It does say not exceeding 24 by 36 for the record, so. A waiver's not necessary.
Is it? I thought it had a bigger size on there.
Yeah, I thought it had a bigger size, too.
They sheet size not exceed 24 by 36.
It doesn't give a minimum size?
Look at the big plan we just got.
That's how it used to always come, oh, for the.
Remember last week?
Oh, yeah, that big roll of paper.
Oh, my god, yeah, that was crazy.
All right, as long as we don't strap it in there on our subdivision rules and regs, I'm okay. I'm okay with that. All right, where are we here? Okay, we're at proposed zoning bylaw amendments, and I'm gonna turn that over to Tony.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So there's four items tonight, as I made mention at the last meeting. The first item is under the Oxford Zoning Bylaws, Chapter 2, 2.3.7, and this pertains to district boundary language. So current language here is, where a district boundary divides any lot of record existing at the time such boundary is adopted, regulations of the district which comprises the boundary is adopted. The regulations of the district which comprises the largest portion of the lot shall be governed by the entire lot, unless the planning board by special permit permits regulations of the lot district which comprises a portion of the lot to apply. Proposed language states where a district boundary divides any lot, so we're eliminating the lot of record, and I'll, and I'll show an example of this scenario. So where a district boundary divide any lot, the regulations of the district which comprises the largest portion of the lot shall govern the entire lot, unless the planning board by special permit permits the regulations of any smaller district of the lot to apply. And this gets us through situations where you have two zoning districts on a lot, perhaps even three. The next slide will show this a little bit more clearly. Here you have lot, I believe it's lot number 12. In its entirety, the lot goes all the way down to Route 20. This is 75 South Bridge Road, and, and a little difficult to see here, but this lot in its entirety actually comprises of three, three lots. It's predominantly R2, but it does include general business right over here, and also a sliver of the industrial. Under the, the language, someone would have to discern what the lot of record was when these zoning districts were put in place. And there is no language here that entertains a scenario where you have three, three districts within a lot. Now, applying in this other lot over here, I believe this is lot 11, you have primarily industrial, but you have a sliver R2. The question then becomes what was, at the time when this line was brought in, when this zoning district was done, what was the lot of record? So 10, 20, 30, 40 years go by, and there's numerous lots in town that play out in this scenario, is, if the lot of record has changed according to the current definition, then there is no opportunity to come before the board by special permit, by any vehicle, really. With the proposed language, we, again, we strike out lot of record existing at the time as such boundary was adopted, and just call it any lot. You still have special permit powers here.
Yeah, yeah.
And instead of saying permit regulations of the other district which comprises a portion of the lot to apply, we leave the language as permits regulations of any smaller district of the lot to apply. So there is that.
Either or.
That either or flexibility. So, and that's from, current language is from 2.3.7.
And we have it on Main Street, general business and residential abutting zoning. We have general business running a small portion of all those lots, and it stays residential unless they request a special permit for being, putting in a business.
And there's roughly about 200 lots or so in, in town that fall under this.
Yeah.
This situation, so. It's, it's all, it's all what this, this request is.
Okay. That one's straightforward, I, I think that.
The next one, I'm just gonna jump over, because the battery storage, I have a separate document to, to go through with, with the board, but under, on my PowerPoint files here, is the marijuana overlay district extension or expansion. No changes since the last, the last time this came before the board. Whereas the board did give a favorable approval, we do believe that the item can come back before a town meeting. If there was an unfavorable approval, then it would be a two-year period. It is, language here, as you probably recall, we were extending the boundary, the southern boundary on Route 20 by 50 feet.
Yeah.
And that's to help clarify some boundary questions where the current overlay falls. Sometimes it's difficult to discern where exactly the boundary. Sometimes the line itself can be either right on top or right over.
It's right on the boundary line.
So it's subject to a lot of interpretation. And this language below, all in, all in bold, is identifying the additional parcels that would be incorporated as well. Let me explain this better here using, using the visual. This is the same map that we used back in, it looks like this draft was done back in August, but. The red down here is the extension of fifty feet. And we'll hopefully clear up some of these parcels, particularly over at Pioneer Drive, we had two or three parcels that was sort of on the, on the fence, if you will. And then the other extension is in this section here, taking advantage of the vacant building at the corner of twenty and fifty-six, frankly, there's two vacant buildings, but, but the former bank building on the corner. Right next to the pond, across from the, the old club. And then.
You're also going up Lester Street more, too, right?
Just fifty feet down Lester. In your hand, you can actually see this a little bit more clearly. But nothing's changed from the last time. From the last time.
What's the amendment?
The extension.
Extending across the street and going up a little bit on twenty and across the street, going up on twenty both sides.
Yes, so, so the language would be. To, to, to extend these. Five hundred foot south of the southern line of Route twenty layout by another fifty feet, so given us five hundred and fifty. And to include the parcels on South Bridge Road identified as parcel B oh nine. On accessories maps, six A parcel B eighty-five point zero two on accessories map eight A, and a portion of parcel A zero three on map three. A depth of forty feet north of the northern line of the Route twenty layout, and a portion of parcel B zero one and B zero two on accessories map eight A, and a depth of fifty feet south of the southern line of the Route twenty layout.
Why doesn't the proposal include? Whatever the clubs, whatever that business was.
That's currently in the overlay.
It's totally in it, yeah.
It's in?
Yes.
So. This square that touches thereupon, that's the only addition?
No, it goes up more.
Well, it goes to the bridge.
Goes to the bridge. It just, it looks, it looks worse, because it looks worse than.
You can't build on any part of the road beyond the.
It's all what, right.
The bank, basically, that's it.
Right.
Okay, so it's covering, it's covering that. And then is it covering the factory? It's fifty feet on the other side of the road. It's spaced on the other side of the road?
Yep, it is. That's good. It is by fifty feet, so it's still, so we'd require, in that scenario, again.
Special permit.
Even under the current language or the new language, regardless, still require a special permit.
And Tony, I think it's gonna be important during the meeting that you bring up the maps and really explain, like, because I think at the last meeting, you know, people got the paper, but to, to have you explain exactly like where it is, it will be beneficial, so.
Yes, yes, and, and I have the slide deck that was never shown. And I, I was not gonna.
But even if you just put profiles of the buildings, because people recognize is that woodworking. In the factory space across from the bank. And unless you've driven down there, it, it goes down quite a ways.
It does.
But again, I, I just, it's still that you're budding residential houses over there.
Where?
Right off, right off of our Lester Street. There's a house on, there's a house right next to the bank and across the street, there's a house right next to that abandoned lot on both sides.
I don't mind the bank parcel because it's got enough land area to accommodate the parking.
You got two houses right next to it.
Well, not gonna, not gonna throw stones, Jeff, but four twenty-five Main Street has a house right next to that.
Well, we were forced, we were forced.
I understand that.
I like, I, I, I mean, I have, I, I have no, I have no problem with going on the other side, just when you cross fifty-six, that's when I have the issue, that's all.
We're not talking, we're not talking, we're not talking just dispensary, we're talking about other things.
It could be any, other things, right, and again, I still think.
Dealing with that industry.
Plenty, I know, but I think there's plenty of room, I mean, because again, it, it, there's no, you can, you can keep on expanding, who knows? You know, once they get a, a foothold there, because it's, again, it's already been zoned for.
I mean, we got a, we got an old factory building there that could be converted into some sort of cultivation facility or whatever, whatever.
But there's plenty on the other side of it, there's plenty of, of lots available.
I'm not arguing with you.
I know.
No one's jumping in at it. No one's jumping in at it. I told you, there's an old Chinese restaurant that should be torn down, another facility put in there.
Yeah, I'm almost with one member.
I know, I know.
The, the third item for, for consideration is. Also along Route twenty, so that's all that they had for the marijuana overlay extension. Nearby, adjacent to, roughly adjacent to the proposed extension area, there's a section. Along Route twenty, so right after the French River Crossing Bridge.
French River Bridge to Turner Road.
Yeah.
Yes.
Where it's got closed in.
The law exists.
Everything.
It does exist, that's an issue, too. The only thing holding it in place right now, a barrel's going across the end of it.
A couple of Jersey bags or something.
Yeah, they put, they might have put those there, too, but.
Everything highlighted within that teal would be proposed, so that's currently R three. And the proposal is to, to change it to, to general business. Let me go back so you can see this a little bit better. Everything in red here, and this, this comes from our master plan, so please disregard the, these, this has been done already. But everything in red here is, is GB. And basically, what you see in the white that I tried to show you here, if you follow this property line, which is the. The grid property.
Yeah, there's a grid, there's, it looks like an old railroad bed that the.
Yeah, you can kind of see that here.
The grid has, the National Grid now owns it, but.
So.
Must be poles running in there.
It's probably the, that's a bike, that's exactly where it is.
From French River Cross.
Mountain bike, so.
French River Cross, converting these to, to GB. The existing owners have vested rights, so they are, they're protected as, as residential. Originally back in the seventies, and I'll get some more information on this, too, but it was zoned business, and, and actually have the.
Yeah, Tony, take it out.
If you're interested, but the entire quarter was, was zoned business.
They changed it, they, they made it, well, you, you understand, we changed the north side of that, that Eastland Partners is now developing for commercial. We changed that, we created that. From the center line of the road on that side of the road.
Yeah.
Entire distance. I think, I think using the smallest piece of those lots, so fifty feet, fine.
Yeah.
You know, that gives, if someone wants to buy up two or three of those houses and put in a small business there.
Yeah, on the side of the street, yeah.
Why should we stop them?
Right.
I think that's what Route twenty is all about, is business. I, I don't know, I.
Yeah, it's got the sewer.
Feel bad for those people having to live next to that busy road, you know, that's horrible. Who named Texas Pond Texas Pond?
Could be a trivia question.
Used to be a village, used to be Texas Village.
Yeah, Texas Village is what the whole area was called.
Didn't know that one.
Oh, yeah, I, I agree, I agree, we should do, we should extend it so it's contiguous for business use.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
So would the desire be then to just go out fifty feet?
Yeah.
Okay, that's easy enough.
Yeah.
Now confirm that this is not.
It's like you did on the other side of the road there for the marijuana one.
Yeah.
And I'll, I'll double-check the measurement on this property, if it's, if this falls less than fifty, then maybe if it's twenty-five or so.
That's a, that's a steep slope going down there, I mean.
It's a nice little property here.
Is that the, that's the used cap place?
Yep. Yeah, like a.
I don't know, is it?
It's like a granite place over there, something, or some kind of a rock.
Oh, rocks.
There's a rocks, yes.
Rocks and wood.
Thank you, yeah, something like that, yeah, something like that over there, but it's.
It's already a business.
It's a steep, yeah.
It's operating as a business, even if it's in the.
That's a tough driveway to get into, yeah, except you're driving fifty miles an hour, you gotta turn right into it.
Yeah, yeah, you'd get rear-ended.
Just on Google Earth, so we get a better view of kind of where it ends.
That's cool.
Wow. Great technology.
Leave the old garage still next to it.
Yeah. There's a house.
There's Turner Road.
Turner.
Well, there's the house right there.
Yeah.
So what's behind there? There must be some, there must be parking behind there or something.
Yeah, and it just.
You gotta get behind the building.
Yeah, you gotta go behind, you gotta go further up off.
It just drops, you can see.
You can just see, they, they have, they have all their parking in the back.
It drops down, oh, yeah. Yeah, but it drops down over there.
But they gotta access that through Turner Road.
Is that, that's where they access it? I didn't know that. Yeah, you can see it, you can just see it to the left right there, yeah.
So everything on the left is, is R, R three, right?
Yeah.
And then.
I mean, they're not gonna have much front yard left after they extend Route twenty there through that area. There must be some takings going on over there.
So, and it, so it would end right here.
And the bridge is right there, right?
Yeah.
That's the bridge across, yeah.
French River Crossing.
But there is, there is a rail trailing back there, that's exactly what that is.
Yeah, and actually, on, on the older zoning map, you can see the, the tracks that were shown there.
It used to be able to access that right from the Cumberland Farms.
And just while we, while we're here, on the overlay for the marijuana extension, so it wouldn't, so it would end here in this point, so just prior to the bridge, okay?
Right.
And so as, as member Lee mentioned, you know, these, this, this user here. The, the overlay district would, would go in to this property, but would still require a special permit.
The house at the corner of fifty-six is being demolished for the turnaround on Route twenty there.
Yeah, I thought, I thought that.
Yeah, sorry, yesterday, this all boarded up.
That's all boarded up.
Yeah, I thought the strip truck was getting, yeah, somebody hit that.
And the, and the strip mall is, that building's coming down, because that's gonna be a turnaround for the other one.
Perfect, perfect place, just go, put it right there.
So, so where this, this club used to be, this is right at the end of the current overlay.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, see.
I know.
So what do you mean a turnaround? So, I don't get it.
The road's gonna be divided, so if you wanna go do an about-face or a turnaround, they, they create these jet-outs. If you go in Robin, you see them all over.
Oh, yeah, there's one right next to, whatever.
Oh, so if you wanna make, so if you wanna go in, in the opposite direction, it's like by Beejings, right? Like that, okay, gotcha.
Yeah, yeah.
Or like the remarket basket is.
Remarket basket, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So there'll still be land to develop behind it.
Oh, that's a big lot, yeah, that's, that's, that's a big lot back, perfect one.
And so, so the other lot that, so this building would be included on the, the new proposal. Which, for sale. Okay.
And again, right next to it is, is a house.
Yes.
Well, there's an apartment building right next to it.
And then another house, yeah.
Right down there.
Yep.
There is some gap between.
Because I remember we were talking about the headlights and stuff like that.
They're not right on top of one.
No, the parking lot goes in back there, though.
No, this is actually a bioswale here.
There you go, yeah, yeah, it's all, it's, all backup adapters, Route fifty-six, it goes, it goes down into Texas Pond.
When this parking lot was full.
My, my, my secondary thing, though, is again, once it's zoned for that, then you can continue the zoning to encroach more and more as needed.
Yeah, but hopefully with the additional, we don't have as needed.
Yeah, look at this, it's only been there for what, two years, and they've already, we've already gotten a third one, or a third, it could be anything, again, it doesn't have to be a store, it could be any type of thing, too.
Right now, it's zoned for business, so any type of business could go in there.
That bank wasn't there long at all.
I think that was built in two thousand and seven.
Yeah, it's.
Is that long, really? Yeah, Southbridge, Southbridge Street.
Yeah, they were only in there for about, they were only in there about ten years, then.
Cornerstone Bank.
Cornerstone, yeah.
It was Spencer Savings Bank.
Wow, when it first, when it first was, yeah.
Yeah, and Spencer Savings Bank became Cornerstone, and they merged with the South, Southbridge Savings Bank, so. Hey.
As they do, they close half the branches when they do.
Well, that's like, you can't find a Bank of Boston anywhere except for a kiosk.
Yeah, that's all you got.
Bank of Bank is all you make money from, yeah.
They're all doing that.
Yeah.
They're competing with banks that don't have any buildings.
I like my little Wolf's Five.
In the last one is the large-scale battery energy storage systems. So we followed a similar format to the solar bylaw, but it's not exactly the same. The yellow and green highlights, as you have in your printed text, are, are new, either sections or bullets added or, or swapped. So it's germane to, to battery storage and not, and not solar. And I did note that the green highlights need additional review, just to confirm that.
The size.
The size and the noise decibels, too. So it's a quick run-through here, so the purpose, so it's consistent, it's to regulate the development of large-scale battery energy storage systems by providing standards for the placement, design, construction, operation, monitoring, modification, removal of such systems. That address public safety, minimize impacts on scenic, natural and historic resources, and to provide adequate financial assurance for the decommissioning of such systems. Okay. Applicability, it will say, planning board shall be the special grant authority for this chapter. We do. Call out here that the large-scale battery storage systems be permitted by specialment with site plan approval in the light industrial zoning district and industrial zoning district. That's different than, than solar. Solar is, as I recall, is all throughout by specialment and site plan, but here for, for battery energy, we're looking just specifically at the industrial districts for this type of use.
What, what, I know, I know what a battery is, yeah, I mean, it's, I, this has nothing to do with solar being stored, though.
It could, it, it could, it could be an accessory to solar.
Is this the thing you always hear humming when you go by, like a, like a big power line type thing with a.
Yeah, it's like a transformer.
Yeah, the transformer's like off of Clear Mountain Road.
He knows there's, he knows there's sound to it, because he's put sixty, he doesn't know if that's the right.
I mean, when you go by Clear Mountain Road with that, I know there's one there, you can, I mean, you can hear it humming.
Yes. And I'll, and I'll go into requirements of a noise study and so on.
I mean, so solar could be one, and obviously.
It could be an accessory for solar. These structures look like containers with ventilation systems, battery system on the inside with other servicing components in there.
So that picture I saw, yeah, go back, Tony, you can't find that page, but you showed that right up above those yellow ones.
Yellow, yellow, okay.
It's, it's similar to that.
So they must, they're finding a new use for those old shipping containers, putting in battery systems in it.
They put data centers in it, too.
I mean, is this like a, like a backup system, is, I mean.
It could be a backup, but this is, what's interesting about the battery energy storage systems is that it's a whole new market altogether. Harvesting, if you will, energy in these battery systems and then deploying them as, as the market calls, calls for it. There's.
So it's to try to.
Typically lithium batteries.
It's trying to equalize demand throughout day and night.
Harvesting energy and, and then when, when their opportunity presents itself, gets infused back into the system at a certain rate.
Oh, yeah, I mean, they, they get the excess energy at night.
I mean, isn't that what?
And they store it, and they put it out during the day when you got peak, peak usage.
And then with these solar, these people, you know, they're putting, you know, if they have too much solar energy on their houses, then don't they sell that back to the.
Yes.
Sell it back, the same.
The state's pushing for this for resilience, too, for, you know, if there are breaks in lines and things like that for service, so that's the state's motivation in a lot of their streamlining of this process.
But, yeah, as, as Tony said, it's, a lot of it's just, if they have extra capacity during the day, they hold it for the next day, and if it, then it's cloudy, they can still sell power, the International Grid or whoever it is.
And people are buying lots to specifically for this use?
Yeah, yeah, there's, we've had maybe two or three inquiries in the last few months looking for these. Now, we would have put them perhaps under miscellaneous, under industrial, under the use table. But we wanted to consider. Car, doing a carve-out here with, with some very clear, one defining what this is, so, so, and I will get, I will get additional verification on the, on the size, but five megawatts, I'm told, is a very, very large system. But the, this is for, so we have to define what large scale is, and the intent of this is certainly not to, to, to impact or to regulate if someone wants a smaller system in their home because they have solar, or if a business is looking to, but. Or if a business is looking to. But it's the part of using it for system security, if you will, makes sense, but then using it to, to, as a business model, this, this falls under large scale when, when you're using this under, uh, when you're using this for business really. Harvesting your own storage from solar, maybe a little bit extra, right, um, to support your, either your business or your home and so on, that's completely different.
You're in the kilowatt range there. Like a house system's generally about 15 kilowatts, a business is under 100, so...
But again, instead of having an emergency backup...
You're not up in a megawatts of power.
But instead of having an emergency backup generator, you could have an emergency backup battery, you know, and no...
Yep.
Yeah. I mean, and again, this kind of reminds me when the first, all these solar farms, we didn't have anything to go by when these first solar things came out, so getting ahead of this is a great idea.
Right, right. And so, we, we have to, of course, give definitions, um, and, um, you know, this, in Massachusetts, there were two or three that I've come across where, I believe it's about 100 megawatts, 150.
Yeah.
The largest one is out in California, um, but there's, um, there's several out here in, in, in Massachusetts. Um, they're not all regulated by, um, DPU, Department of Public Utilities. Um, there's one out in Carver that, that fell under DPU's jurisdiction because it was connected to some type of power plant or electrical plant, I recall. Um, there's one out in, in Redding and, um, one proposed out in Medway. And I think it's 75, no, it's, I think, once it's 100 to 150 megawatts or so.
That's a lot.
So, and, uh, and there are challenges with these, um, as it relates to, there's, there are benefits, um, but, but challenges would be, um, noise, um, trying to decommission these, um, structures. The challenge of, I always talk about curb appeal, um, when I'm talking to...
Oh, yeah, those aren't too...
There's a very, uh, there has to be some, some curb appeal here. So, so that's why we need some standards, right?
Yeah, fence, fencing or whatever, screening, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, the general requirements, um, in keeping, what you see in, in white is, really has not changed from the, um, solar. Uh, again, we do, do a carve-out here for accessories for, for solar, um, facilities, provided that the solar were, were approved under our, um, our current bylaw. Required documents for submission. I do wanna, so these technical specifications and design plan, um, that's coming out of, um, recommendations through, through other states that are going through this now, state regulatory agencies, that there be all these systems, ventilation, safety control, fire prevention detection, the suppression system, um, so we wanna see technical specs and design plan for these.
So is the fire department.
Exactly, exactly. Is it permitted through, through, um, through building, electrical, I believe some oversight by fire as well.
I mean, how long do these batteries last? Like, they don't know yet? Well...
It depends on the charging cycles, so it's highly variable. But, yeah, cleanup.
Twenty years is a long time? Or five, 10? I mean, do they have, you know, that's, I guess, you know...
They're modular. They replace cells when they die. So, it's like 1,000 car batteries sitting in a rack, basically. Take out the ones that fail and replace them.
We added noise, uh, that a noise study to assess the impact of all noise sources generated from the project to abutting properties and determine the appropriate layout, design, and control measures. Um, and that, in this noise study, the noise report, that we need details of the assessment methods, summarizing the results, and recommend the required outdoor as well as any indoor control measures, um, and that the report must be prepared by a qualified individual with experience in environmental acoustics. I should say too, um, should we ever get an application under this, um, if this were to pass or even in miscellaneous, we would be very, first thing we would recommend is to hire a peer reviewer to, to look at this information. Um, it's certainly, um, an area, and there are...
Well, what's this, uh...
Great, uh, peer review firms for this type of stuff.
What about the technical review that's happening, uh, next week?
Yes, um, so there is a technical review, um, for, and I don't know if the project's been set up, but some of that's interested in, in venturing out in, in battery energy storage. I...
I had one safety question on here. Cause it, it's pretty comprehensive in terms of the fire plan and, you know, fire, water containment and all that. Is there anything that should go in here about, um, cause I, I don't know even where you'd start with the building codes on this kind of stuff, um, for lightning protection. And the reason why I ask is that's the number one reason that batteries get cooked. I used to work for a cell tower company.
Can you repeat that again?
Lightning protection requirements.
Lightning protection, okay.
Because unlike a solar farm, if that gets hit by lightnings and cells, wiring and things go, if you crack batteries, it does become a hazmat situation. Most of these are lithium-based batteries.
I will follow up on that.
I'm just curious if there was any, like, general standards around lightning protection for these types of things.
Nothing jumps out at the top. Um, a lot of this language comes out of, um, New York State. They developed regulations, but I know, uh, in our state, I don't wanna say they're, they're starting to catch up, but they've given some preliminary advisories to building commissioners and, and fire chiefs too, uh, where it has relates to safety, but specifically the element of lighting. I'll, I'll look into it.
Uh, I mean, I'm sure to protect their own equipment, they do something. I was just wondering, there's a standard that we can reference.
They'd have to drive some, uh, lightning protection rods into the ground.
I put a lot of antennas in buildings in my town.
I mean, these, I mean, these have to be secure, they have to be secure, they're not, I mean...
Especially a steel cube.
Anyone can't, yeah, they have to be unlocked, like unlock some kind of secure facility type thing or what people, I, I would think they're kind of relatively dangerous if somebody went in there and started splashing water around.
That would be the big thing, yeah. Batteries are very expensive.
Yes, we do have some language in there, and then what, what's gonna govern that is also, uh, under building code for these structures, um, there's a minimum of, by code, there's a minimum of three feet between each container's structure, which is interesting. And then, and then we do have a, uh, there is also a fencing requirement and, uh, and standards too for, um, landscaping and distances between, between that. Um, what's governing that is, um, the electrical code in terms of the, uh, the distances between those structures. So, that's, um, that's where we are, and, and the code could change too. So, I didn't cite any specific, um, fire code or electrical code.
Lightning protection's probably in the electrical code somewhere.
Oh, yeah.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Those standard, those standards, I shouldn't call them standards, right? The, the, the code will, will change, um, will be revised, I'm sure. Um, so I was hesitant to cite a specific section of, uh, of the fire code or the electrical code. Uh, design and site standards, similar, uh, similar to, um, to solar. Um, but we talk about, um, lighting systems. Uh, this is more about the casting of light on, on the property and abutting properties. Signage, the utility lines, uh, be placed underground. That's, that's actually a, a common standard. Vegetation and tree cutting. That areas within 10 feet of each side of the system shall be cleared of combustible vegetation and other combustible growth.
Can these be on a zoning? Can they be in residential? Can they be in...
No, no, not, not under, not under this, um, this draft here. Uh, we, we're limited to the...
Industrial.
Industrial districts.
Okay. Um, I mean, that's the thing with people's cellphone towers and stuff like that back then. It's like, well, you got a piece of land and guess what? I can, gonna, so this, that wouldn't be applicable.
No, I, I mean, and not at this time, unless in, in the future, if, uh, the state, um, gives some type of exemption for, if they consider this a utility, like the utility companies, then...
Yeah.
Never say never, but...
Yeah.
Where it doesn't exist now.
It could.
I say we...
But right now, it's just industrial district only.
I, I say we give it a location.
Okay.
Yeah, until otherwise, until we're...
You know what the guy says next week.
Until we're mandated.
That now is it down?
Um, decommissioning, um, adopted this, again, uh, found a few examples here, but there's a whole section about the protocol for decommissioning and ensuring that there's financial surety as well, and that the surety is updated too. This should sound similar to, to the solar proposal.
You don't want those batteries hanging around rotting in the woods. Bad idea.
And the surety and, um, be interested to, um, to, if we ever get a project in before us, see how this actually gets crafted. But the surety shall be reviewed by the board every 10 years or when a new entity takes over the operation of the system or land changes ownership.
So, should that say an or instead of an and?
It could. Um, surety shall be reviewed by the board every 10 years or when a new entity, yep, takes over the operation of the system or land changes ownership. Um, the board may require additional surety as needed.
I mean, do these things need to be inspected like once a year, twice a year, every month, uh?
I, I don't know the, the, how regular they have to be inspected, um, but I can get some answers on that. Yeah. Change of ownership, that they are required to notify the, um, the planning board within 60 days of the change, and, uh, failure to provide such notice, um, may make the, um, well, it says shall be. Uh, the special permit shall be void. So, um, and reinstatement of the, of a void special permit will be subject to the same review and approval process for new applications. Abandonment, um, after 12 months, which the board adds discretion, um, could use whatever's available for, under the bond or surety to remove the system and restore the site in accordance with the decommissioning plan. Standard 11, just, um, so it can go be abandoned for a year before any action can be taken? I think that should be...
Well, that's the same, that's the same as, what are you saying? That's the same as we got in the solar bylaw too.
I think it's gonna be tricky to, I don't know, um, how you discern that.
Like, I think of a, a solar panels, they're not really harmful or anything, but lithium batteries being left untouched for over a year before we can do anything about it, I think that's... I mean, I'd see what other, what other those towns are doing. I mean, I, I would think three months or whatever of being abandoned. I, I don't know. You, you're talking about hazardous material, I guess, whereas I don't think anything on a solar farm is that hazardous.
I think, I think the question comes with this is, um, you almost have to split the difference because if they're dis, if they've disused the site with the intention of potentially reusing it in the future, removing the batteries would be a good thing, but having to completely decommission and take out the structure, maybe not.
But I think waiting a year...
No, I, I agree that, that's an awfully long time for lithium or lead batteries to be hanging around with nobody maintaining them. But it is possible they could have a site that they, they wanna hold on to because they may reuse it, and they don't wanna completely...
And I'm assuming that's the value, that, those, that's the value of, those batteries, the value of the...
Yeah.
The little containers now.
So, I don't, I don't know how you'd handle that, but that might be something to look into.
Yeah. Um, I'll see if there's some other, uh, examples of timeline for these, if it's four months.
It's just leaving the environmental hazard around without supervision or maintenance.
Mm-hmm.
That's the thing.
And it's important to note too, when it's, uh, the term abandoned here is, um, is it abandoned in terms of everything is shut down?
Right.
Including the fire system and so on versus just, you know...
Kind of soft decommissioned, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. But I could see we're having a shorter timeframe on that.
Yeah, I mean, my, my concern with it is, it is a newer industry and you're probably gonna get startups who are gonna jump in and build things and then pull back, and they'll be acquired by someone else who will close half of them and open them in other places. You know, all that stuff that happens in new industries, like we were just talking about with the banks. They merge and then half of them close and, you know, it, it's gonna be pretty fluid. But making sure we're not leaving, you know, lead and lithium batteries lying around would be a priority for me.
Agree, agree. And even the more reason where there may be startups coming before us, folks, I've never done this before. Um, and, um, you know, having something in the books may be very helpful.
I'm sure the fire department is gonna have yearly, uh, permits that have to be done. They're gonna find out.
I think large battery systems, if you look, you'll find information about maintenance and, like, review them probably in the electrical code because they're pretty common in large buildings and hospitals and things like that. So, that language probably already exists and is covered by existing code, but it's like a, you know, they just went and shut the mains off and walk away from the building for a year. You get a problem.
Agreed, agreed. And, and just to, to, to sum up too, I should say, I, I was scrolling over a few things, but modification language, the special permit criteria, um, remains the same, um, and severability is, is the same as well. Modifications is that proposed modification, any approved facility requires preliminary review by the planning board to determine if an amendment of the existing special permit site plan approval is required, right? So, um, coming back before the board, is it a minor modification, is it a major, major modification? Do we need public hearing comment? Yes, no. Special permit criteria, I, I didn't wanna, uh, change this from, from the existing because it, it has the, the same fundamentals in terms of, I, I would say what you would wanna see in a special permit.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, as well as language, that no oxygen shall be granted by the building commissioner, um, until the planning board's reviewing and approved an as-built plan, and, um, planning board at its discretion, uh, may approve an as-built plan upon a provision of the proper bond to secure and complete work. Um, so, the, keeping that language, which frankly would be language that...
Yeah.
Should be throughout all special permits. Um, severability is, is just standard language, um, that's, uh, that we do include in all our chapters, um, or in the newer chapters. So, if this, anything in this bylaw is found to be invalid by a court, that the remainder of bylaw shall not be affected and shall remain in full force. This table here is just a, a summary of the uses allowed in the industrial districts and, um, putting its home right down below large-scale ground-mounted solar energy systems. We put large-scale battery energy storage systems, um, requiring special permit, site plan review. Uh, distinction again, um, that this is just limited in the, in limited, in the limited industrial and industrial, um, zoning districts. So, that's, that's all that I had, uh, Mr. Chairman and Members.
Okay.
If I may ask a related question to, to this, not particular to this, and don't have to answer tonight, just sort of curious for background. Um, do we have any rules or limits for battery systems, et cetera, at cell tower sites? And I'm asking that for a particular reason, and that's because Verizon, T-Mobile, and all these guys are in the business these days now of basically putting these shipping containers out at cell tower sites full of computer servers for edge computing, filled with batteries and things like that to back them up. And I'm wondering if that's something we might wanna just keep an eye on. They probably won't make five megawatt, but they'll be substantial. You know, it's not a UPS under somebody's desk. It's something to power a mini data center sitting out at a cell tower. Now, I don't know if anyone has the intention of building any of these near Oxford, but it is happening around larger metros and things like that. So, just curious if we had anything around that, because we're talking about restricting this to industrial areas and we could very well have medium-sized battery systems hanging out in residential areas out at cell tower sites.
Mm-hmm. I, I'd be curious if they, if they are...
Five G's a big driver of this.
Yeah, if they're, would, I'm, I'm wondering if they would be exempt for, as a, as a public...
Yeah, I don't know.
My concern in the, as the years go by, if battery energy storage systems, which is a business.
Yeah.
Uh, harvesting and selling of energy, if this becomes exempt.
Yeah, and some of these companies who own the cell tower sites, not like, you know, often Verizon doesn't own it. It's another company who owns the site. They're now like putting in solar panels, batteries, these data centers in a pod, they call them, out at these cell tower sites. So, it's just something I wanna keep, keep an eye on.
They'll come in and modify all their sites.
Yeah.
They would, would...
I don't know if that part of the business would be considered utility or not.
Right, right, right.
It, it's not really voice communications. It's, it's other stuff, but I'm, I'm just kinda curious.
I think that's the debate. I think that's the, that's, that's been, that's been the debate.
What they're trying to do is they're basically making these things that have a copy of parts of the internet that are commonly used as close to the customer as possible, so they don't have to send data across their international network. They can just feed it to you locally, so you get your video faster and cheaper, and they spend less money 'cause they have to send the file once to that site, and then it sends it to the thousand people watching it. So, pretty cool stuff.
Technology, way, way, way...
I'm just curious because you could end up in a situation where you have a substantial...
Way above me, way above me.
Effectively data center, solar, battery blueprint out at some of these cell tower sites.
Well, I know, Verizon is getting into the internet business.
The tower companies are building these and then offering it as a lease service to tenants.
I don't think it's a bad thing. I don't think it's a bad thing, 'cause I'm sick of it.
Need more competition.
Well, I'd say even, even this, I think this is a good thing. I mean, I really do. I mean, if it's a good thing, it's, you know, it'll...
If it can, if it can help control energy use, it's a very good thing, and, and...
But companies are lazy and don't like to clean up after themselves when they leave.
Well, again, that's the same thing. It's like, you know, when these cellphone towers and all this stuff came through, it's like, well, what, and, they say, oh, these things never fall down. Sure enough, they fall down, and, and if they're in an area, the same thing. It's like, even windmills and stuff like that, there's, this one, it built right over... it's one, built right over a football field.
They make noise, they, you know, you start throwing substantial batteries and you get this thing humming in people's backyards.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There's, there's a chart provided by the industry, I'll say, but across the country, currently being proposed or in a consideration, over a thousand throughout the US of these, you know, battery storage systems, of, of this a hundred, hundred and fifty megawatt category, and it's not just up here, it's even in Texas and, you know, I guess down there, they are harvesting through wind, I think.
Well, even like these, these electric, these electric cars and stuff like that, they're, right now, they're kind of hooked up to the grid to get their power. And this is, with, are these, obviously they must be strong enough to charge a car battery, I would think, you know, without any.
Well, yeah, they're much bigger than a gas battery.
Without being hooked up to anything with national grid or anything.
Five megawatts is like a thousand homes or something like that.
But you could put one of these out in the middle of the desert or whatever and there's your gas station.
Until, until last year, I worked for a company that built cell towers and did this stuff, so, that's how I know.
I was in one of the national, national parks and they didn't have gas station, but they had electrical things for the cars. But in the middle, I mean, you're three hundred miles from any direction to get anywhere, but they had electric to hook up to electricity to charge your cars.
It's big money in it too, all these companies get into it.
So with that, and this is all new, so, so that's.
I think it's solid.
Specimen site plan review, I think is what we would want to do here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, and if we get an application.
We have something to hang our hat on.
We did, yeah, so we did not, when those, when those first solar farms, we didn't have anything. When the first solar farms came in, we didn't have anything.
How we can do it, it's, yeah.
Yeah.
Wasn't good.
Come a long way.
So that's all, I know on the agenda, we noted that the planning board is to vote, should the board wish, vote to send to the board a selectmen for inclusion on the warrant, these, these items, Mr. Chair, so, up to you.
So much responsibility.
I can make a motion to put them, I'll make a motion to put them on the warrant, I have no problem.
All four?
All four, oh, yeah, all four, I have no problem putting them on the warrant, I'll make the motion to put all four on the warrant, that's my motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, now, second, further discussion? No? Okay, roll call.
I vote aye.
I vote aye.
Aye. Aye, carried your nana's sleep. Aye, votes.
So, Mr. Chairman, I know planning director's report's next, but that's, that's all that I had.
You already did it.
Yes, as we know, March, March fourteenth is the next meeting.
But this is where we can, we can add stuff to new business, like when we want something to talk about next week for new business, is this when we do it now or not?
Well, yeah, if you want to, if you're going to add an old business or new business that you want to talk about, we can get it on our next agenda.
Just a Route twenty update.
He's then?
Yeah, please, thank you.
And Tony, just a quick question, so we have a bid out for another marijuana, so when is that up, when is that due by?
First week in May, May second, it'll be, it'll be due, and that's specifically for the retail. So we have two retail licenses, one is taken by Cure Leaf. The second one, we entered, we entered into an HCA, I believe the company was called True Roots. They have since decided not to go forward with their project, so that license became available. And the idea was to put out a notice to. Yeah, a, a, a notice, a request for information to see if there's any interest out there in, in seeking that, that additional license. It's, again, the RFI is only for the retail, if someone could come in for lab cultivation, whatnot, in the overlay district, well and good. If someone comes in with a retail now, we would hold off, we would ask them to submit a proposal under the RFI process. We're going to have a close May second, maybe extended too. But we did do outreach to, to over two hundred retail establishments in the northeast. And although we haven't gotten any proposals yet, we have gotten a lot of, a lot of interest.
I think it's becoming pretty saturated, none of them are that busy from what I can see.
But the manufacturing is still going forward.
Those things could happen, I mean, the lab and or the cultivation, but the retail places.
Oh, no, I agree, I mean.
Fighting each other now for the little business they got.
Again, and.
There's more billboards about it than any.
I mean, you're right, you're right.
Am I right?
Go to Childs, go to Southbridge.
Like I said, drive, drive by on the Mass Bike through Springfield, that's all I see, yeah.
All different places too.
Crazy, so, are we good? So, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Jeff. For the discussion, the Vina, roll call.
I, I vote aye, sorry.
I vote aye.
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 Aye, carried your nana's sleep, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.